Councilman of April 25th to order and stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call shows everyone's here. We have two sets of minutes to approve, so with that we have the April 9th, 2016 special meeting minutes.
Thank you. On the fourth page, the last, the very last council comment, if you would just change the word general fund in there for fund balances appears at least twice, it would be accurate. Thank you.
I'll move that one.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I've got a correction on six.
For the April 11th? Oh, you have something for the sixth?
Yeah, no, on six, on the 11th. At the end of that, that top business before the next, before the motion was made, it should be modified to say the violation of confidentiality, not client attorney privilege. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, same, I think, page six. First paragraph where I'm speaking, third sentence. Right before where it says involvement of client, it should be involvement of the client. So with the addition of the, and the fourth sentence. Right after, or right before serve, it says attorney in that they, add that they serve, and that's it.
I move the minutes as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the bills, we have none. Approval of the agenda, is there anything that we're adding or subtracting tonight?
Not that I have, no.
Okay.
Move the agenda.
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's the time we come to the public comment. Anything that's not on the agenda tonight, you'd like to speak, please be brief, state your name and address.
Hi, Kathy Swan, 44 Woodland Place. I have a flyer to give each of you.
Thanks Kathy.
Okay, I'm just here to talk about Relay for Life for a second. Two things, two dates are coming up. May 7th, we quote unquote paint the town purple, and that means that we put purple bows up on all the streetlights. We go around to the businesses and we ask them to hang our banners, our flyers in their windows, which a lot of them already have our flyers up. And then the second date is May 14th and 15th, we are out at the middle school for 24 hours, raising money for cancer. We have a survivor luncheon, we have bands coming, we have a luminary ceremony, we have the American Legion coming, we have a jazzercise, we just have lots of things. We have 16 teams. We already have about 17,000 raised. Our goal is 65,000, and we normally raise that, so we just want to invite you all out, come on out, see what we're about. Cancer touches everybody at some point in your life, and that's why I do it, to stop cancer in its tracks. So welcome, come on out and see us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Carl Rish, 390 Lennox. I think I'm okay right here. Okay, a few good news items and a couple of heads up things. I just want to let you know that the our creek cleanup of a week ago was absolutely a huge turnout, and it was wonderful, the biggest crowd we've ever had. We had 32 actual scouts signed up, that's boys scouts and Cub Scouts. We had 57 people altogether sign up. 60 showed up altogether to participate, and that included some guys that came out of the tube mill. So we want to help out too. And logged in 220 hours of community service for the city, okay? And approximately 200 plus hours for the scouts individually, okay, for their groups. There were 10 pizzas bought by our friend, Mr. Van Martin, okay, at Pro Pizza, it's an annual thing every year. And Ed Brown contributed root beer. Larry's hoping to expand this, since we had a wonderful turnout this year, a larger, a larger deal for next year. And we'll see how it goes, okay? Personally, I checked back on the worst areas that I alerted Larry to prior to the event. And I'm amazed, they did a beautiful job at certain locations such as Hungry Howies and the cemetery. Okay, which were really bad spots. I hope we can hit them again here at the, at the citywide cleanup. The tube mill provided us with a different deal, this year there was no roll-off box. What they did was provide smaller dumpsters. And I didn't know if it would work or not, but they shuffled them back and forth, in and out of the gate, inside the mill. They called somebody on the walkie-talkie or the cell phone, and another guy came out with a new one, picked up the old one, back in they went, and they just kept shuffling them back and forth. Different dumpster carrier, I guess, different way of doing it, but it seemed to work fine. Okay, on to the next item. Okay, our historical program on Tuesday night was a big success. Just short of standing room only, the presenter brought in his own team, okay? Was probably, I don't know, 10, 12 adults, okay, driving vans, bringing in World War I vintage uniforms, furniture. I was amazed at the guns and the knives and the sabers. And pictures plus artifacts from battlefields, like, like huge pieces of shrapnel, okay, and shell casings. I don't think we've ever had a program quite like that before. Anyway, it was a big turnout and enjoyed by all, and I thought it was another big success for Historical Society. Okay, just giving an alert on a couple of civic things going on. Uptown to Watch and Jewelry Store is closing up, okay, you may, may not know it, okay? People's Express has got some new rates, I'm finding out because I'm using People's Express more than I used to for the last few years. Maybe you're aware of it, I was not. Give you, for instance, if I want to go to Walmarts and stop at the library or, and/or Rainies on the way, it's a dollar each stop, plus your one-way fee, plus $2 more if you stay more than 15 minutes. And out of town ends at Seven Mile. And when I wanted to go to the Washington County Courthouse Annex, I found out it's 1950 one-way. Well, I can't afford it, okay, for my own historical work. Just letting you know in case you were not aware of these new changes that People's Express has made. The drivers have informed me of them. Okay. On the political scene, I want to make you aware of something. If we remotely want to get an item on the November ballot for a local issue, we have to have something on the August primary, okay? We can't do it otherwise, it has to go on the August primary. The date for a candidacy for a person is passed in the March primary, but if the city council wanted to put a local issue for referendum by the general public, it could be done. And there's quite a list of things I think the public would like to know about, or at least like to have some safe so. And I don't know if there's a better sounding board, really, for a public referendum on how the public feels about certain issues that come and go or coming along. It is not required by law to do so, you all probably already know that, okay? But I'm just giving you, for instance, something I've mentioned many times, or a few times. Our sesquicentennial, if we want to have one, seven years from now, six and a half years and counting down from this point, I've mentioned it other years, if the community wants to have one, Historical Society is not going to back it, it's got to be a public initiative from the city. So I'm just letting you know, that's just one issue, okay, just something for food for thought that could go on the and I, don't you think I've tried? I can't get anything on the ballot, but you guys can as a group, okay? If you want to put some local issues, and I've got a list of it, but that's all for, just food for thought, okay? Thank you very much.
Anyone else? No old business, so we'll move on to new business. We're going to consider the application for the city of South Lyon quota class C liquor license.
I don't know if this microphone's going to be tall enough, so. I just want to introduce myself, my name's Mark Gerant, recently moved out. Oh, we can adjust it, all right, thank you. Hey, there we go. My name's Mark Gerant, G E R A N T. Recently moved out to the area, lived just off of Dixboro and Ten Mile. I had spoken with a couple city council members already and wanted to basically just come down for an informal hello, introduce myself. Little bit about myself, I've been in the bar restaurant industry for 14 years now. I own a place in Detroit called Bookie's Bar and Grill, I don't know if some of you guys have been there before or not. Also did a startup, The Fountain Bistro on Campus Marshes. I am a reserve officer for the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, also an advisory board member there. And living out here, I've noticed a lack of quote unquote, a, you know, a date night or something that's a little bit nicer for as far as food and restaurant goes. I feel like a lot of residents and neighbors that I have or know in South Lyon or Green Oak Township are frequently going to either Brighton or Plymouth or, you know, North Vill Novi to kind of get the same experience. We've got three great places downtown, but they're all very similar in a way, I feel like they're all, you know, a similar type environment. And you can't drive more than, you know, five minutes down Ten Mile one way or the other way, and we've got obviously plenty of new subdivisions in the area, plenty of new houses. And I think there's a need for something a little bit nicer. So I proposed a key location, which is the coffee shop, which is currently downtown. There is a tenant occupying the space right now. I did receive a letter of intent from the landlord that when that lease would be up, or if I was able to take over the lease of the current tenant, I proposed to do a bistro-style restaurant there. And so currently, just to let you kind of know where I'm at, the lease is expiring in another year. I've spoken with Derek, and I forget his last name at the moment right now, but we're in negotiations of buying out the remainder of his lease. Should that not be available, or if we can't get the deal done, I've looked at two other spaces downtown. One is the building directly next to, or attached to the, where the Times-Herald building was. I believe that business had moved over right above the yoga studio there, so that was another possible option. I also looked at the building next to the movie theater, which obviously is a little bit of an eyesore in my mind, but, you know, some work needs to be done there, but those are all possible locations. And every city is a little bit different, opening a bar in Detroit, I'm sure is a lot different than, than opening a bar restaurant out here. So I guess I just wanted to, you know, get some feedback on, on what council would be requiring, what you'd be looking for. You know, the standard, you know, application has already been filed with the state, so it gets sent down to the city. We can, you know, kind of collectively put together what exactly you need, define a space. At that point, we can get, you know, artist renderings and, you know, mock menus and different things like that to, you know, get final approval. But, you know, like I said, every city is a little bit different, so if there was something that the council or the city wanted to see specifically in a plan, I'd like to have that for a, you know, formal meeting. I believe I emailed just about everybody on council, so I have my contact information. I can also give out some business cards to, to everybody as well. But yeah, just really wanted some feedback. I think, you know, everything I've, I've heard is really positive so far. I really haven't heard anybody say, no, this is not a good idea. I think it's definitely something that the city needs to kind of keep people here. Like I said, it's usually kind of going to the next city over for, for something like that. So that's what I want to do. I have a track record self-financing the project, so there shouldn't be any, you know, financing issues, anything like that to delay the process. The biggest hurdle right now is just to actually secure which of those three spaces we're going to go into. So that's that. Does anybody have any questions?
Thanks, first off.
No? Okay, cheers.
So, anybody?
I was wondering how much area for seating in, the example that you had talked to me about was the coffee house. And one of the, yeah, one of the, actually all three of those have relatively similar circumstances in that there's, there's not a great deal, there's not a huge footprint.
Sure.
So once you got a commercial kitchen in there, you're eating up an awful lot of that space.
Yep, well, we got, the, the goal for this is not to be a giant place. The goal is to have kind of an intimate setting for, you know, you take your wife out to dinner, you take your girlfriend out, you go for a nicer drink in town somewhere. So, you know, our target right now is 60 to 70 seats plus bar. The advantage to the corner space, which I really want, is there's some patio space there. I think what, I mean, at least what I love, and if anybody's been to Bookie's, I love our rooftop patio. I think outside is something that's just really not available in the city. Further down at the Lion Grill, they have a bit of a patio, but again, it's, you know, kind of on its own footprint where this, the patio itself, would actually extend out right onto Main. I just think it's really cool when people are driving by and they see people eating outside. Not to mention, there's really no place to kind of grab a seat and a nice drink outside. So, you know, there's added seats as well, again, those are limited, obviously for Michigan winters, we can't be outside full year round. But I think it is a nice feature to, to have there. The coffee shop space also has, where Glazier Days is, there's a separate, I want to say about 400 square foot room on the side, which is kind of perfect for the kitchen, so it doesn't eat too much of that front area there. The, I believe it was a Kraftwerks, the blue and white building, they do have a little bit of basement space there as well, which kind of, well, it doesn't kind of, it does help with the footprint upstairs. There is a lot more room for dry storage, walk-in coolers, you know, some of the amenities that you need without taking up to the floor, floor space. The space next to the Times-Herald, which I walked through as well, definitely a little bit of a tighter space. You know, you'd be looking at something like 40 to 45 seats in there after you kind of knock everything out and open it up. So, but the, the theme for what I want in the, the, you know, the general project oversight is really to have a, you know, a smaller type place. And just from being in the bar industry for a long time now, it is a lot easier to have a small space with 20 people look full and fun than it is to have a 200-seat place with 20 people look full and fun. So, you know, really the, the goal is to really make it kind of interactive, which is why I do prefer the longer narrow buildings. I think when you have the bar that runs along one edge of it and you have limited seating on the other side, it kind of forces people to bump into each other as they go to the bathroom, as they come out, you know. Oh, hey, look who's here for dinner tonight, you know, a closer environment, I think, is the funness that's, that's sort of missing here.
Well, I could certainly understand that, and I like the, the kitschiness of those smaller environments. My concern is that with this being our last quota license, my own personal feeling is I'd like to see something that holds a lot more potential for being a draw for additional economic development that would be sprung right around that, that entity.
Sure.
And we were provided these, all the escrow accounts or escrow licenses that are in Oakland County, and there's, there's 38 of them that are, that are out there, 11 are, are actually in the, they're being pursued right now for transfer. And I'm sorry, 23 of them are pending, and 11 of them are, are, the purpose is for escrow. I was, I know that there's a disparity in the difference in cost on what this quota license is compared to these, but as I said, I mean, that's, that's really a lure, one of the few lures that we really have to attract something of a more grand scale.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm a little apprehensive about giving it up for something that'll have, your, the hours that I was seeing, it seemed like your, your open time is going to be a relatively short window daily. So my, my hope is to end up having that license assigned to something that has a broader scope and, and more, more of a draw towards satellite kind of activity around it.
Sure. Just, just in response to that, so with, with the area of, or let's say the coffee shop example. So with the area of having 60 to 70 seats and plus bar, you're looking at probably another 12 to 15 based on the space. So, you know, you're looking at a potential between 70 and 90 inside. The outside, obviously, I, the plan is to extend the patio there, so you could have potentially another 30 seats out there. So, you know, there is a potential to, to, to increase the, you know, the footprint with the patio space. The, with regards to, you know, having something to attract more people, I think it depends on how you look at it. You know, does a place that really works and is something that's different, that's going to keep people here to stop in and have a drink and then maybe jump over to the hotel? Or, you know, go across the street to Lake Street? Or something that's a draw initially that's not really there, I think that spreads out. So, you know, as far as like the economic benefit of it, you know, there's a lot of cities that have cool little spots that people want to go to, and that drives them there for other things as well. You know, and with regards to size, I think there are plenty of restaurants, or whether it's, you know, Aubrey's or whatever, that do have a large footprint, and I think that large footprint, it causes them to miss something as well. You know, I don't know how many people are going to come from Brighton and say, hey, let's go to Aubrey's because they have 200 seats. Whereas, hey, let's go to XYZ because it's great and it's a new spot, and it's, you know, something that's a little bit different. You know, with regards to the quota license, there is a, a difference in cost. So I think at the end of the day, when, you know, you're looking at a project and you, you put your costs in together, you know, and you look at all your numbers, and you say, okay, if this is going to cost me an extra 55,000 to pull a license from XYZ City, well, it's 55,000 that might not go into the space. So, you know, I definitely think that there is, you know, obviously an obvious cost difference to where, you know, it allows you to do more with the space or, or whether it's more promotions or whether it's more advertising, I mean, every dollar adds up in this business. So, you know, I look at it a little bit differently than, than just looking at the total number of seats. I think there's like a long-term effect, and I think there's also a draw that really combats that.
Have you had any discussions with our DDA?
I have not, no.
Because I think about four years ago, I could be off. We, we gave the DDA, I think we gave authority for up to nine special use liquor permits or license. I think it was nine, but it was where you don't take it with you.
Yeah, it would, it would stay on.
It stays on the, on the premise.
I, and again, I'm, I'm not 100% you know, informed on how it works, but my understanding was the DDA would allow the license to stay there, but you'd still be purchasing another license from Oakland County. So I don't know how much that would change from just bringing another license in from Oakland County on itself.
Well, I think that's something that we need to look at.
Okay.
I had some questions. We've, we have them, and we haven't used any of them, so I'd like to at least look at one.
I mean, I, believe me, I'd love more information on it as well. You know, obviously with, with the quota license and coming from the state, it's pretty straightforward. I don't know too much about the, the DDA one. Typically, to, to also kind of just get back to you, Glenn, was in other cities, I know with the quota licenses, they can put a contingency in there. So, you know, it'd be up to, you know, council or however you guys establish that, where you can say, okay, this, this license has to remain here for X amount of years. Sometimes it's three years, sometimes it's five years. It seems like as the quota licenses get smaller, the terms of you have to stay get bigger. So, you know, one of the suggestions or, or something to look into is putting a contingency on how, that it had to stay in that space and it had to operate, or it had to be returned back. So I know that's happened in other cities. So, you know, that might be a, another option to say, hey, you know, if this is not working out, we're not necessarily losing our quota license, we'll get it back. So, you know, for whatever reason, let's say three years.
That's a good sweetener, because, I mean, at 2010, you know, we'll end up having the new census, and if, we might end up hitting the population to be able to, to get one more license.
Yeah, sure.
So that's possible. But the idea that, and this isn't any kind of a, an assessment of you or anything, but nonetheless, if, if we were to give you the license and things go south in short order, you know, I mean, that's a commodity to you then.
Sure.
And, and we're out of license.
Yeah, which is, which is exactly why, I mean, 100% I'd be willing to do a contingency on it. You know, and, and because of the cost savings on the quota license from purchasing and transferring another license is so great, it's, I mean, it makes sense, I guess, on both sides to say, hey, listen, I would really like to pursue this one, and from your side, hey, if it doesn't work out, you know, we can return it. And I, and I think they do some type of a dollar buyback, or I, I don't know the exact legal language of it, but I know that, I spoke with Patrick Howe, who's my, my liquor license attorney, and he said that most likely if they want it, they will ask for a three or a five year, or if they don't, it's, offer it to them. So, you know, it's kind of one of those things where, you know, it can definitely be put, put, put into the, into the language of the deal.
Right. We had just, our attorney had given us some information regarding the idea of being able to encumber it some way. And the, but it wouldn't end up being a vehicle that liquor control would end up seeing in their, our resolution. It would end up being an arrangement between
Sure.
your entity and us.
Yeah, I think that's how, and I think that's how it, how he explained it to me, so.
Yeah, Mark, I want to thank you for coming out today. I think it's, it's very good when you see potential business owners take the initiative to, to come before the body, and I think that's, that's a great sign.
Thank you.
What I wanted to say was kind of something, actually it spanned on what you were touching upon, was drawing people downtown and giving them that kind of atmosphere or that nice experience to get out. Because I speak to a lot of South Lyon residents, not only in the city, but Lyon Township, and that's one of the number one things people say, is that they just wish that they had a place where they didn't have to drive, where they want to keep their money in the city. People love this city, even people who live in the area, they love this city. They want it, they want to give back to the city, keep their money here, but they find themselves going to other communities. So if we have that one, not that one, if we have another restaurants such as potentially yourself, I could see it, people coming in, and that's what people want, and there's a need for that. So just wanted to say, I, I'm excited about this potential for this project. I like the idea that we're looking at different spaces to, to consider where you could locate. I would ask that to our city administration that we work with you as much as possible, so if you need any information, that we get it to you as timely as possible. Because certainly, we want to take advantage of anybody who's knocking on our door and be responsive, so.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you for coming out today.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So kind of piggybacking off of what Joe said, I think, you know, the platform that we ran on was trying to build up our downtown area, so your entrepreneurship is awesome. I think it's great that you're coming here and asking, and certainly it's an awesome idea as well. And I've been to Bookie's many times, and it's fabulous. I was going to ask, do you have a seating blueprint, just kind of an idea of if you end up going with the Lafayette Corner, what kind of seating blueprint are we looking at, and if you're going for whatever you're planning on doing, whichever space?
Yeah, and so obviously, you know, I can't have an architect draw up every single space until I've, you know, narrowed it down. So 100%, obviously that's something that I would bring to a future council meeting when we get approval or we get a space and say, this is, you know, this is our footprint, these are some renderings of what we're looking at. I think I, I sent you a couple of renderings of, yeah, a couple of pictures of two concepts that we're looking at. So, you know, if each space was exactly the same, yeah, I could have that today, but, you know, each space is, you know, different in its own way. So, yeah, that's definitely something that, you know, I would, I would have and, and kind of demonstrate at the next meeting of, hey, this is what it's going to look like, you know, this is our seating capacity, and, you know, And, you know, I have two architects that I work with, so it's not an issue. It's more an issue of just nailing down which space it's going to be exactly. And then at that point, you know, when we say, hey, this is, you know, where I want to put it, I can, I can bring everything in.
Along the same lines of small spaces, this kind of reminds me of downtown Plymouth. Downtown Plymouth has the Sardine Room, I think it's like four, two, one or whatever. They have a bunch of small bars that are very quaint, dark, fun, just upscale. And I think South Lion needs something like that.
Yeah.
So it'd be very.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're not.
Yeah, and, you know, I think it's one of those things where it, you know, it, it has to evolve a little bit. You're, you're not going to turn into Plymouth overnight, you know. And is, is South Lion ready for, you know, white tablecloth dining? Probably not. But, you know, somewhere between that Bookies experience and white tablecloth, there's a middle ground right there where you can still attract, you know, a number of the residents in the area and a number of people from around the area to come in. And so, you know, it, it, it starts like that, you know. Plymouth, Royal Oak, Brighton, they didn't just, hey, tomorrow we have twenty great places for everybody to eat. It has to start somewhere. And so the downtown area really has the potential to, to, to be like that, I guess. I'd love it, the more, the more the merrier, you know, you want people to come in and have options.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I just need a point of clarification from Tim and Lynn. Is this a informational or is it an actual action item?
I'll be honest, this landed on my desk on the fourteenth. Mr. Jared hasn't spoken to city administration at all. I assumed it was an action item because that's the way it landed on my desk.
Okay, because it's my, it doesn't sound like it's more of an information.
No, I, yeah, when, when I had, when I had requested it, I just wanted to request kind of an informal hearing for if there were questions specifically that you wanted. So that we didn't get to the formal, you know, city meeting and, you know, Michael, you asked me something, I say, I have no idea, I didn't have that ready. So it was just more along lines of, okay, we wanted to see blueprints, okay, we wanted to see maybe, you know, scope and a menu and stuff like that, yeah.
Kind of like an idea.
Yeah, for sure, you know, and that, and that's all kind of the next step. It was just, you know, kind of getting more information on the things that you exactly wanted to see so that we didn't run into a situation at a formal meeting and we're like, I'm standing here and I say, I don't have that. I don't want to say I don't have that.
I have a, a couple of friends that, when I saw this on the agenda, I called them that are in Detroit. In fact, I was actually in Detroit a couple of weeks ago and met with an individual that I was attempting to encourage to come to South Lion to open up a restaurant. Or, or at least come to South Lion and take a look at us.
Sure.
So this is a good timing. I, I like the coffee shop location. I think that's a real key anchor in the city. And I think that's a spot that we just can't allow to go vacant. And I think that we need to make sure that whatever goes in there is going to be a real good attraction and draw for the city. I, I think, I, I would agree with you on that. I think that's a good location. I think the other location that you were talking about, which is the old Grand Trunk spot, which is interesting, I'm going to talk about that tonight. That's very narrow, that's a very narrow space in there. And so your kitchen would probably go in the back. I just think you, you don't have the room. And if you want a little bit of visibility for people to drive by and see people dining, you're not going to get that, that visibility. And I think that's kind of important for people to drive downtown and see people sitting in a nice restaurant, having dinner. And you're just, I don't think you're going to get that at the other location.
Yeah.
But, but the, the question I asked them was, you know, what is Bookies like, you know, and it's a sports bar.
Yep.
And, and so I'm, I'm kind of curious as to whether this, your vision for this restaurant is going to be another sports bar.
No.
Okay, good, because no one's going to come to South Lion for another sports bar.
No.
I mean, we have sports bars. So I just wanted to let you know that if it even looks like a sports bar, you got one right across the street, you know, you just, you need to.
There are very similar.
You need to be very, very unique in what you're offering.
Yep.
And, and I just wanted to ask you, are you familiar with the Townsend downtown?
Yes, I am, I'm very familiar, yeah. And great building or great setup. They obviously put a ton of money into space. But yeah, that's more along the concept of, of, of what we're looking at. Have you ever been to the Fountain Bistro downtown?
No, but I'm going to be there in about two weeks.
We can't be there because it's sold. And about, almost a month ago now.
Really?
Yeah, almost a month ago. So the Fountain Bistro is, is my other business partner, John, so that was our sister restaurant. That's actually been purchased by the owners of Two Twenty Merrill in Birmingham.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I believe that's public. If it's not, it's public now.
Well, if it's in the public domain, it's not confidential, I'll tell you that right now.
Well, now it's public, but no, it did close. They're actually in the middle of their renovations as well right now. But if you've been to the Fountain Bistro, a little bit more of that concept, if you've been to Bookies and the Fountain Bistro, you, you know the clear difference. And, and the Fountain Bistro started as, you know, just a lunch place before the liquor license was acquired. Then it went, you know, white tablecloth, and then we brought it back just a hair to kind of that middle ground. And so pretty much operated like that the last two years. And so that's more of the concept that, that, that we're looking at here.
Well, what's wrong with the Townsend look?
Well, the Townsend look is in a major city. It's obviously a very expensive build out. I don't, I don't know how much they, they put into that space. But, you know, they've got an incredible area outside, they've got a lot of space to work with inside. I don't think there's a building in South Lion that has that same exact, you know.
No, but, but what they did, but what they did is when you walk in there, they have fabulous furniture in there. They have fabulous lighting in there. They've got great things to look at. They have a, a living wall with plants, the, the, if, if you know what I'm talking about, the wall with everything on it. They have done some really cool creative work inside of that. So for me, if you're just going to go in and, and change the color of the walls.
Oh, no, no.
And, you know, that to me, you know, that, that's not kind of what I think maybe the downtown is getting ready for.
Yep.
There's also a restaurant out in Pinckney, excuse me the name, La Vida, it's an Italian restaurant.
Okay.
Started by a restaurateur, I believe, out of Ann Arbor. I would encourage you to go.
Sure.
Just, it's in Pinckney, it's downtown Pinckney. The space is small, the space is intimate, it's white tablecloth and it's standing room to get in that place, what, Thursday, Friday and Saturdays.
Sure.
It's phenomenal. They wait outside to get into this restaurant. Because they've built such a great reputation for food. And I think that is one of the things that I'm going to be looking for. The Townsend, I'm telling you, the stuff on that menu is out of this world.
Sure.
You don't have to do, you know, a half a million dollar build out to serve an incredibly, you know, food product.
No, absolutely not. And, and, and that's the thing with, you know, nobody's the Townsend before they're the Townsend. Nobody is forced before it's the fourth, you know, something is always new and, and it's up to the operator to create that. You know, when you're putting in your own money, it's, it's a lot more of a drive to make sure you're doing it right and be successful. You know, nobody wants to lose money. So, yeah, I, I think that, you know, with, with all the people in our network and the people that we work with and, and the different chefs and, and everybody that's kind of been in our network between the Fountain Bistro and between Bookies, between everywhere else, there's a lot of good people out there. So, yeah, no, I, I think that's, you know, you kind of hit the nail on the head, we're, we're looking for something better. So, and, and, and that's the, that's the concept and the drive behind it.
I think also the outdoor, the outdoor dining is going to be real critical here.
Yep.
Are you coming in with your own money or are you coming in with investors?
I'm coming in with my money.
Okay.
Yep.
Because that, that is really something that is really, I think, very popular in, in downtowns is that ability to sit outside on a July night and, and maybe just have hors d'oeuvres and go home.
Yep.
I know me and friends are, are going over to Lake Street Tavern and, and then we hit across the street and see a movie on Sunday nights.
Sure.
So you don't have to have a full meal, but it would be nice to go down there and sit outside, have hors d'oeuvre and then go over to the movie theater and spend the evening downtown.
Sure.
But, but that outside is really important. I'm telling you, the outside at Aubrey's has done very well for them.
Sure.
Very, very aesthetic. Lion Cantina, which is up the road, they just opened up their windows. Their outdoor is, is where they do most of their service on nice days. So you have the opportunity to do outdoor stuff, but, but you've got to do it right.
Yeah, and one of the things that I mentioned earlier is, you know, speaking with Dennis and, and having the ability that those parking spaces are part of the lot there, there, there is the ability to expand. And, and first thing on my agenda is, you know, expanding the outside patio there for the reasons that I said. It's, it's cool to eat outside, it's cool to drive through town and see a bunch of people enjoying drinks and, and having food before a show or before going here, before going there. So, you know, that, that space definitely has the ability to, to expand there, which is, which is great. Which is, you know, it's on my agenda.
What kind of music are you playing inside, jazz?
I think you got to let the environment figure that out, you know.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious.
You know, you know, you, you, that's an honest answer, you got to let the environment figure it out. You know, I've been at different council meetings where there's the next guy over and he has entirely everything laid out. And this is what we're going to do, and this is what we're, this is what we're going to do. And it's just like set up for failure. I, I'm, you can't operate like that. I think that, you know, the crowd, the clientele, what's going on, different nights, whether it's live music, whether it's DJ, whether it's just, you know, whatever the source of the music is, it has to be for the people that are there. So, you know, if I tell you one thing, I'm just making it up to appease you. You, you can't operate like that. I think it really kind of develops itself.
Well, I think you're going to have a problem if you walk in here and it's going to be an upscale sports bar.
No.
TVs and, and all of that.
That's not the concept.
Because I can get that anywhere in town.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not the concept.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Well, at some point you have to make a call on what it's going to ultimately be.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And, and, and no, and, and I didn't mean to be entirely vague there, but, you know, to what station I'm going to have on or what Pandora, you know, station's going to be on, I mean, that's, you know, it's got to kind of come with the space a little bit. I did send, well, here, I can give you, this was just kind of a little concept drawing in again. But the, the, you know, the goal here is to, the first thing that I said to the people that I spoke with is we don't have something that's a little bit nicer. And so, you know, the, the, the first plan here is to have something that's different, that's nicer, that's not Lake Street, the hotel, the draft house, which is pretty much, you know, three same places, so.
A lot of the stuff, excuse me, just, a lot of the stuff that you had spoken to are things that you really want to get with Lynn on so that you could try to find out exactly how much room you have out there, what's, what's doable. You don't want to end up projecting what you want to do and only to find out that.
You can't.
For whatever restriction, that's not able to take, take place.
No, for sure. And, and that would, that would kind of go through the city planning process as well to see exactly what we have and what we're allowed to do. You know, you can't, can't always build something and then ask for forgiveness later. Some things have to go in order, so.
I, um, I live downtown, Glenn lives downtown, Mary lives downtown. And you're right, you're absolutely right. We've had a issue for a long time with something that's a destination place for all of us to enjoy, especially as we've gotten older. And instead of, my office used to be downtown Detroit and spent a lot of time down there. And I've been to Bookies on both Remods and the other places as well. And I, and I also know great things come in small packages sometimes. And it changed my ideas about another place that opened up recently that I thought they were too small and they proved me wrong. So, but I also believe what Glenn says and what Maggie hits on is we really don't need another sports bar in town. Because it kind of, once it, people come in with great intentions sometimes.
Yeah.
And I know your track record's different. I've done my research a little bit too. And I know, full respect for what you do and, and, and they speak for themselves, I guess. And, but that being said, we have some bars in town, they're great, they serve their purpose.
Yep.
But they tend to, like you said, morph into something that.
Yeah.
Doesn't really attend to the businesses you started and then kind of don't want to go down that road, you know what I mean, so.
And I think the morphing is the mistake of the other place across the street. I mean, the hotel has been here for a hundred years. You're not going to be the hotel and just pull the hotel's traffic. So there's, I already have a sports bar. And I already had a fine dining or casual fine dining is how we labeled it.
It comes in anything like that, I think that looks great. I have a background in design, so I.
Okay, yeah. And, I mean, I, I had two other concepts, but this is pretty much the one we're going with. This one fits the space of the coffee shop the best. It fits, you know, it fits what, what I want to do in the, in the sense of, you know, we don't, we don't need, you know, a plate with a piece of meat on it like this and twenty-seven dollars. Like we don't need that fine dining, but we need that, you know, that in-between. And so, yeah, I mean, that, that, I saw that right away and I was like, this is what I want to do. So, yeah, that, that's, that's, that's the concept. And again, as we kind of move forward, I'll, I'll have so much more for you. It's more just, you know, kind of what do you want to see so that I can do it right the first time.
I also think it'd be good to, you know, talk to Lynn a little bit more.
Sure.
Our city manager and, and get acquainted to what's going, like Glenn says, we, we have some ordinances, we have some things that are there. We want to make sure that what you want to do, you're going to be able to do and not all of a sudden realize it can't happen.
Yep, yep.
So.
Yep, no, I think the, the biggest change really is the, the timing ordinance. Is it one, one o'clock in South Lion, correct? What time do you have to close down by in South Lion itself?
I'm already in bed all the time.
But I think that's the biggest change. I think it's one o'clock in South Lion is what I believe.
Not that I know of, state law, state law prevails.
Okay, I thought there was a different ordinance for, for the area there.
I think it's demand of the traffic and most of the South Lion, people leave about eleven-thirty, twelve.
All right, I thought it was an earlier time and that's why the place down the road there got the kind of after-traffic when everybody closed. But, because they were in whatever township.
Actually, Northwoods is actually within city limits.
Oh, there you go. Okay, cool. So, yeah.
When is your timetable? I mean, has, has the coffee shop indicated that they're willing to move out sooner rather than later or?
So, so we sat down and, you know, I would love to, to, to say it's going to be this exact date. I think we're still kind of bouncing back numbers a little bit. But, you know, before calling in to be on the agenda again, I would have that deal done. My goal is, you know, as soon as I get the keys to, to be a sixty to ninety day project. So, you know, I've built three bars now. So I have the people, you know, I have the trades. I also own a housing company on the east side, National Housing. So, you know, I've, I've got trades and everything from, you know, plumbing to electrical to, to et cetera. So it's, and, and the other thing is, you know, self-financing it, it's, there's a lot less, you know, waiting around period. You know, a lot of people are always waiting, waiting, waiting. If you can get it done and get it done quickly, that's the way to do it.
So you're looking at a build out of ninety days?
That's the ideal, that's the goal, yeah.
And Derek has expressed an interest in?
Yep.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so, so we, we talked and, you know, as, as everything you start, you're a little far apart. And I think there's always a middle ground there. But I also think that, you know, once everything's kind of in writing and say, here it is, I think the persuasion there will, will, will be okay.
One other thing I just wanted to add, you know, I've spoken, I know people in the restaurant industry and as we all know, it's very tight margins. But once you get a successful business and somebody who knows what they're doing, it really helps make that, the odds in your favor to be successful. So I, I like the idea of what you just said about how you have all these connections to builders and contractors and you probably have great chefs that you can, you know how to put the right people in place just based off of your previous record. So it's basically what I'm getting at is I, I think we're in the right direction and we have a good chance of this being very successful, just given your track record and that you know how to make a business work. So I'm looking forward to this project.
Well, I, I will say not to, well, I am patting my own back, but if you can make it in Detroit, not this last five years when everybody made it, but if you can make it the ten before then, you know, you're, you're doing something right. Because it was the armpit of America for ten years there, so.
Daughter of the Alden Towers down there.
Yeah.
So she's down there right now.
Yeah, so, and, you know, there's definitely a new influx down there. And, and, you know, the other things too out here is just the, the, the cost to operate out here are significantly less. So it's already in your favor. Downtown rents are outrageous now. I mean, it's absolutely outrageous what they're, you know, charging per square foot down there. So, you know, before you even open your door, you're in a, you're in a massive hole. Where here it's, you know, a lot more reasonable real estate and, you know, lease rates and everything like that.
I just have a quick question, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I know you said fine dining, are we talking, well, not fine dining, but a step back from fine dining. So this isn't meant to be a family restaurant, just to clarify.
Yeah, so, you know, what it is, is it, it's not meant to be a family restaurant. So if you're looking for like the Aubrey's experience or going to the hotel for pizza, it's, it's not meant to be that experience. The, I, I guess the, the in vogue word for it is casual fine dining. So, you know, you're there in jeans and a collared shirt as opposed to, you know, soup night out with, you know, the whole nine yards and, you know. So, you know, it, it really is one of those things that kind of blends right in between. And so, I mean, casual fine dining is the, is the word for it. So it's, it's, it's kind of a place where it's comfortable, but you can get something nicer.
Okay.
Yep.
I think another thing that I'm going to be interested in seeing is how you enhance the outside with either architectural pieces or with really nice planters. Deborah Silver, I don't know if you're familiar with her. She owns Detroit Garden Works.
Okay.
And she's doing a ton of work with Dan Gilbert. And she's doing a lot of the design work for his particular businesses that he owns. And I think one of the things that Deborah does, and, and if this relationship continues, I'll email you her blog. I think also one of the things that is important to me is that, that the, the restaurant looks nice at Christmas time. You know, is that you've got some nice, you know, garlands, some nice decorations. I think you have the opportunity to really make that a showstopper. I think you have the opportunity to really make that a showstopper, and, and I think you've gotta look at not just what you're doing on the inside, but I think you need to take a look at what you're doing on the outside seasonally to present a really nice upscale look, like what you'd find in Birmingham.
Sure.
I mean, where's your office?
Um, as far as for, for bookies?
I thought I saw Birmingham in here somewhere.
Uh, no, nothing to do with Birmingham.
Her attorney is.
Oh, my attorney's in Birmingham, yeah, sorry.
Okay, okay. Well, you know, I mean, we're just as deserving as, as a nice environment as Birmingham or downtown Rochester.
No, and I think, um, you know, I, I think that, uh, uh, you know, obviously that building does have some character. It does have a historical value. I don't think you wanna go reinvent the wheel with it, um, where I think you can really, uh, hit the nail on the head with what you're asking is with that patio section. I think there's an opportunity to do something really cool there with, um, you know, the surrounding area and lead stone and, you know, wrought iron work and flower planters. And I think that, that would be great. Um, because, you know, right now, it's kinda sloppy. I mean, we'll just call it what it is. And then, you know, you're kind of into that parking lot right to the post office, and it's an okay-looking parking lot, nothing special. Um, but I think to, to kinda hit what, what, what you're looking at is that's the place to do it. Um, you know, there's definitely obviously some little things that you can do with the building. Uh, but, uh, I don't think you wanna necessarily reinvent the wheel with the building itself. It does have character, and that's what makes it a cool space. Um, I think you really wanna attack everything that you're saying with that patio and outdoor seating area and really make something special.
You can do some really nice seasonal interest there.
For sure.
Some fall decorations, some, some Christmas decorations that are just really out of this world. I mean, there's some great stuff that can be done.
For sure.
I think the one thing that's key to this town, what everybody tends to say, is what attracted everybody here in the first place was the small-town look.
Yeah.
Not sure everybody knew exactly what that means, but that is key. You know, I mean, we have some pretty nice buildings downtown, and, and we've seen what's gone on around the communities around us. Some of it works really good, and some of it is really nice if done right.
Yep.
And we're trying to make sure that we do that right, instead of allowing bigfoot things to come in and take over a little bit and ruin that look.
For sure.
We still would love to have all this going on.
Yeah.
You know, and if you do this on the inside and keep the historic outside and decorate the railings, get a little nicer and, plantscaping, things like that's gonna be fantastic, I think.
Yeah, no, I, I.
But again, I said.
I've been trying to get that space for two years. So, you know, it just, I was, I was like three weeks late before the coffee shop, you know, re-upped in there before he went in there. And, um, you know, Dennis was a great guy. He was like, hey, I already kinda got a deal in the mix, and he was, you know, very loyal to his tenant and this and that. But, uh, I have been calling him for two years. So, yeah. Cool.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
All right, cheers, thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Yep, nice to meet you all. Thank you very much.
Did you need that back?
Uh, if you guys keep, you wanna keep a copy of it, I don't know. All right, thanks, guys.
Make, make sure you work with Lynn.
I will. I will work with Lynn, and then if anybody, uh, you know, kinda gets home tonight and says, oh, hey, I didn't think about that, um, I did put you all in emails, so you should all have my email. If not, I know for sure Glenn and Mary and Joe, I know that for sure. Okay, great. All right, thank you.
You know, he had provided us a couple of renderings, or at least he provided me a couple of renderings. I can email those to you guys as well.
Thank you.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, and, uh, John, if I may, um, just say, the other thing I wanted to point out was the, the audience viewing didn't get to see the, the drawing, but it was a very nice drawing in the inside. It was, had some fancy type booths with some nice displays on the walls and.
Kind of like an industrial.
It's urban industrial.
So, it was, it was a nice presentation. Um, he's also sent drawings to, uh, several council members of, uh, no, examples of other establishments that he owns. And the concept looks good, so it's not something as we're maybe concerned about having another sports bar, it's not definitely in, in those realms, so. That was it. Thank you.
Okay. Consider approval of the Michigan Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, M-I-M-A-B-A-S. Updated agreement.
Normal person size. All right, um, this is pretty straightforward. Uh, back in two thousand, uh, council at the time approved, uh, what was EMAC, the Emergency Michigan, uh, Agency, I apologize, um, oh, yeah, Michigan Emergency Management Assistance Compact. Um, since then, in the, uh, about seven years since then, uh, MEMAC has evolved into this thing called MABUS. MABUS, uh, has its origins in the Chicagoland area. Wisconsin's an adopter now, Illinois, Indiana. Um, Oakland County was the first MABUS division in Michigan, and now I believe there's thirty MABUS divisions, over about seventy-five percent of the state is on board with this. Um, and MABUS stands for the Michigan Mutual Aid Box Alarm Association. Um, a big push of this came out of post-Katrina to allow for better intrastate and interstate mutual aid. Um, and so that's what this speaks to. Uh, we fall under kinda the Oakland County Mutual Aid Association. The agreement that was adopted in, uh, 2010 had kind of a provision in there that essentially got the first eight hours free. And it's still that concept for basic manpower, so for a, a major fire incident, where we're just looking at, hey, we need would be considered a strike team of five engines, or we need tankers 'cause our water system's impacted. That still is under that kind of eight-hour free, uh, if you will. And if you're gonna have an incident of this caliber, the chances of you only needing that assistance for eight hours is slim. So, it was just to kinda get resources in there initially. What has turned is, um, Oakland County, along with most other counties, are struggling to fund and sustain these specialized teams, basically technical rescue such as high-angle rescue, get in somebody like off a cell tower or water tower, um, trench and confined space, and then hazmat. Um, we have fortunately very few of these incidents in our city, but countywide, Oakland County does produce quite a, quite a lot of these. Oakland County do have their own assets for this. What this speaks to is if in South Line we were to have a major incident, which again would be, we just don't really have the risk profile here that, that other communities do. Um, if we were to call in assets from Livingston or Washtenaw, essentially the, the clock would start at the second they were requested, not that first eight hours. Now, if we're talking an event of this size, we do have a cost recovery ordinance, so we probably would be, um, looking at, uh, trying, so if it was CSX, we'd be going after CSX. Um, if it was, uh, a criminal nexus, then we would be using that, such as DUI, we'd, we'd go after whoever the complainant was, or the criminal was. Um, and if it was a state-declared declaration, then there'd potentially be state or federal funds, so. I, I, the reason I mention that is I don't want the city to think that, that this is putting us on the hook. Um, we'd be kinda liable either way. This is, just to, just to clarify. Um, they're not asking for a formal, uh, adoption or a formal resolution. Uh, this is something that with the state, since we've already adopted the main part, they're considering it a kind of amendment. Uh, so it's just the chief elected official for the city or township is all they're asking signed for it. So, just wanted to bring it before you, and i-if there's any comments. Unfortunately, we really don't have the ability to change it if we wanted to 'cause it's a statewide agreement, so.
Chief, just out of curiosity, how many times have we had to respond, uh, South Line to a major incident where this would fall into?
Uh, so currently, we, um, we could be, as, as part of Oakland County, we could be requested to go somewhere. Because of the size of our department, we're not, um, they, each department basically had to offer up, what can you give out? We're very, very low on that list. Um, and it's just because of the size of our agency. Rochester Hills, Novi, um, Independence Township, larger departments with larger fleets, they're kinda the first wave, if you will. Um, we could potentially, uh, send resources, but a big key with this too is they don't want you to send resources and leave your community unprotected. So, that's the other part of this, is that we, we wouldn't ever leave and leave us unprotected. Um, at most, I would see us maybe dedicating one or two rigs. The other problem with us too is, um, all of our members have other jobs, and so it's, the, the burden is shouldered more on the career departments where they can send potentially someone for a five-day deployment out of state. And if they work full-time for that fire department, they're not worried about being fired from their other full-time employer, so.
And then what about the cost recovery? I know that we have an ordinance now, which gives us the authority to recover our costs.
Yep.
I mean, but in a situation where, say, we needed the help?
Yep.
Would the, I mean, is there any discussion in here about what the timeframe is before these responding departments can start hitting us with bills?
The specifics don't get into it, um, in.
Because obviously it's gonna take some time to get that cost recovery. I mean, is our exposure initially, you know, like, if the clock starts running day one, we get a bill from whatever department or departments had to respond within thirty days, and then do we owe in thirty days, et cetera, et cetera?
I've never seen specific timelines to this. I know Oakland County has, um, outstanding incident bills that go back several years. In fact, the Wayne Furniture Store explosion, that was close to five years ago, that's still outstanding. So, again, I, I don't, and it, they all kinda realize that, hey, they could easily be on the, on the other part of that. So, a lot of that is the original departments. My understanding is though that, that bill needs to come from us being the authority, having jurisdiction. So, essentially, whatever agencies were part of that, we would then submit to, as one group, we kinda become the fiduciary, if you will. Where essentially, we have to talk to everyone, okay, what were your assets? We then have to pursue that corporation or, or individual through the city, and then we would reimburse. Versus, uh, Howell being able to go to a, a business in our district even though Howell came to assist us is, is my understanding of that, so. But I'm, i-in, in Michigan, I'm not, I am completely unaware of any department. There, there being, s-somebody's upset because a, a bill wasn't paid. Uh, I don't wanna put Tim on the spot. I don't know if he could speak to that anymore, but I, they do have mechanisms for the cost recovery, but, um, again, sometimes this, this stuff takes years, such as at Wayne Furniture.
It sounds like they give you the opportunity to get your, uh, recover your costs before they start billing you. Okay, that's.
If that William C. Frank store is still outstanding, that, that, they're not pushing for time there, yeah.
Yeah, and, and fortunately, I mean, that's one thing, if we do get a local, if, if we go through the county and do a local disaster declaration, um, the, the state and federal money actually comes fairly quickly. So, I mean, that's, our, our biggest threat is either A, something with CSX, or B, a severe weather event. Though, the, I mean, that's just, that's our hazard profile, so.
Thanks for that.
I was just gonna ask, is this, I'm, I thought you said it earlier, this isn't our document. This is a document presented by the state, correct?
Correct. So, this is, this is a, this is part of that Michigan MABUS, uh, document that they're requesting all of their member organizations to adopt locally.
Now, is it all across the board that everyone has to enter into a term of, is it six years? Is that what the term is? How long is this?
Um, I don't believe this expires, because I know that's why with that, that previous, uh, EMAC agreement, there was, I don't believe there was a sunset on it. So, this, this is just an amendment to that. It's one of those that it doesn't, i-unless it's amended, it's just kinda.
Ongoing.
Ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, this, this is statewide language.
Just out of curiosity, if we were to say no, would we still be part of this, or would then we be forced out?
They haven't really crossed that bridge yet. Um, I, I am unaware of, because of our ties with Oakland County, um, I think we'd be covered under that. Um, uh, but I, I haven't, haven't asked or answered the, the question of what if, what if we don't sign it?
What would be the upside of not?
No, I mean, I'm just, I was curious. I mean, no.
I, I, I think, I think, I think the worst thing that we could potentially deal with is if there was an out-of-county, for Oakland County, we're fine. For out-county resources, we may get a denial of service by an out-county agency being willing to come in knowing that, that, that we're a non-participatory member. Again, if, if something really bad's happening, I, I don't see that being obstruction, but I, I think a lot of this is just everyone's kinda acting in good faith.
Okay. So, we don't have to do anything?
Well, that's a pretty homogenous community, so, I mean, they're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sign away, John.
Basically, you need to authorize the mayor to sign.
Yeah, I, I would propose a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Well, I'll make the motion that the mayor authorized the, what is it, MABUS? Uh, the Michigan MABUS Update Agreement.
Second up.
Call in, please.
Cool, thank you.
Always have to, no.
Okay, consider approval of a special event permit for the annual Lake Street Cruise in 2016 to take place monthly, beginning in May 2016 through September 2016.
The organizer is here. I have reviewed the paperwork. It's in order.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Cook. Do I need my address?
Yep.
Two-five-seven-zero-one McCrory Lane, South Line. And these are my committee members also. Um, we are here seeking approval for the 2016 Lake Street Cruise Inn that takes place the fourth Wednesday of every month, um, starting in May, and it will run through September. And what we do is we close off Ten Mile Road between Reese and Pontiac Trail, and then, um, various car clubs come in each month, and we park them all over the street, and we have a DJ, and brings lots of people downtown, and it's a good night.
It's a very good night.
It was a great night.
Yeah, so, that's what we're looking for.
Especially for gearheads. That's a great night.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, well, the only thing is that there is one exception to the normals. Um, we're looking in September to change the start time to six PM rather than six-thirty PM because of it getting dark so early, starting in September. So, that's the only variation from previous years.
And those cars are every bit as nice as the other shows cars, so when it gets dark that quick, you really miss out.
Yeah, it really, it really squeezes in because we do awards and, um, we have raffles and different things that we do, so it really kinda touches, cuts the timeline down really short with the.
Chief?
Two things. I, I am recommending approval, even giving, given the early start for the last event. Um, I do so in consideration of darkness. Uh, if council approves that, council needs to recognize that we are impacting rush hour to a more significant degree by moving it from six-thirty to six. But I'm not objecting to doing that. The second thing is, I believe the city attorney may wish to speak to, is a general city policy of requiring copies of the actual insurance policy, uh, be provided to the city prior to the event. Right now, we only require the hold harmless statement and the certificate of insurance.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I've communicated with Chief Collins on this issue and the city manager. Um, the city has some experience with this issue related to Pumpkin Fest, but the, uh, certificate of liability insurance, the accord certificates, there's a legal issue about whether these are binding. So, as a matter of housekeeping, administrative housekeeping, we would make a formal request for a copy of the insurance policy that is related to the certificate of insurance. So, if you could obtain a copy of the cer-insurance cer-insurance policy.
So, do you want the entire policy?
Yes.
Okay, and I've got that, so.
If there's a separate declarations sheet or something like that, that should come with it. It may be included in the policy, but that, just for our files, and we'll put it in the file with the special event permit.
And I can do that. I've got it, so.
That would be great. Your insurance agent should be able to get that for you.
Yeah. And who do I take that to?
You can send it to either Lynn, or unless she wants it to go to me.
Uh, just bring it to me. We'll put it in the file with the special event permit.
Okay.
I'll put it in the file here at some call.
No problem.
Uh, one thing that I like about your event is it reminds me of the car show. Are, are you familiar with the car show up in Frankenmuth?
Yes.
I, I'm just telling you, I go to that one, and the car show that you put on here reminds me of the Frankenmuth Show because the cars are stationary, and I have to tell you, the owners of, of the cars that are there, it's wonderful to be able to talk to them and learn about the cars. I, I just think you provide just a phenomenal event. I come every year. I love it. You do a great job. All the cars that come are just wonderful people. They're so proud of their cars, and I like being able to talk to the owners of the cars rather than just having them buzz by, like, like on Woodward. I, yeah, I think you just do a great job.
Yeah.
Everybody puts a lot of time into their vehicles, so they, they like when people call up and ask them about them, you know.
It's phenomenal. It's just, uh, yeah, you do a fabulous job.
Great, thank you.
It's hard to believe this is our fifth year. We were just, you know, trying to count it down the other day and how we've grown just from the one block to the second block, and then we got with the church and got that grassy knoll area there. Um, and so, and in fact, they're going to improve. and got that grassy knoll area there. And so, and in fact, they're going to improve and actually make some sort of a, a little bit of a driveway going into that grass there because we had to make some ramps so the cars can get up in there. So everybody's kind of on board and, you know, taking, taking a piece of it and running with it.
Oh, everybody likes you. I mean, really.
In August, we had a hundred and eighty vehicles show up.
Right.
Yeah.
And that was huge for that month.
That really was.
And sometimes we're being a short month, or a short time because of the daylight, we still had a hundred and sixty that showed up. So it's, it's growing.
It's a big deal.
A lot of the older owners, it gets dark, you know, they probably can't see as well as they used to and whatnot. So they like to leave, but we like to not give out the awards at, you know, seven o'clock because then everybody thinks, oh, it's not gonna stay around, you know? So we kind of like to drag it out a little bit.
And with that many cars, we have more, more cars to look at.
Yeah.
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 It takes a little longer.
Later in the season, I've gotten my, my walking strategy pattern is primarily work that, the open area of the downtown, and then you can work under the trees because that sun gets so low that it's really hard to see in it.
Oh, yeah, also, I was gonna add that I, I think it's a great, great program. I've seen how you guys have developed over the years, and it's nice, it's good for the local businesses, too. I think it's great. I talked, you know, I, we were just talking about Derek. I was talking to him, and he said that's when he does his best nights, is when you're having the, the car show because there's so many people stopping in and grabbing a coffee. And I'm sure it's the same with, you know, be it the hotel or Lake Street Tavern.
Yeah, they all have a, have a bump.
It's great.
Yeah. Yeah, they do.
Yeah, so I think it's great. And then the other thing is, you know, you walk down there and you see friends from, from Green Oak and Lyon Township and South Lyon, and it's, it's people coming in from other communities and spending their money in our community. It's, it's great, so.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm, with that said, I'm gonna make the motion to approve the event for the requested days.
Road closure.
Yeah, the road closure, I'm sorry, between Lafayette Street and Reese Street from six-thirty PM to nine-thirty PM at Sept, September twenty-eighth, which will close at six PM. Was there any other days besides?
That was it.
Okay.
It's that last show.
So.
It'll start at six, right? I thought you said close at six.
I'm sorry, yeah. Closure at six, yeah, thank you, Mike, I apologize.
Oh. Just out of curiosity, with the new theater owner, you might want to touch base with them and see if they might, because they're, they're talking about putting on like these retro movies once a week, or once a month. That might be a good night for an old car movie, you know?
Right.
So you might want to try to coordinate something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
American graffiti.
Yeah, that would be a really good tie-in.
Yeah, it'd be kind of a fun thing.
Right.
What did that date us, huh?
Did you support?
No, he had to.
Have a motion?
Yeah.
With support?
That was Glenn.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And I'd like to especially thank the chief for the, the police coverage that we get for that night. It's wonderful. Thank you so much. And for Bill, the service you do for us that night.
Thank you.
And the fire trucks that come down and park.
He's on a fire call.
Oh, he's gone? Oh, okay, but we want to thank him, too, because that's a great thing for us, too.
That's really cool, yeah.
We appreciate the, the support from all you guys.
They're really proud of that rig, and it shows very nice down there.
Yeah, right.
It seems like they, they get it all set up, then they got, all take it and run somewhere.
Yeah.
It's worthwhile.
We won't let any of those dudes have a cop car like American graffiti.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, consider approval of a special event permit for Brown's Root Beer Fifty-Six Year Celebration.
My job's real easy tonight because not only were the cooks here, but Mr. Brown is here.
Basically, I'm just asking approval to close the road in front of me like I usually do when I do something like this, from Pontiac Trail to the collision shop.
So if we say no, do you have to stay open beyond the, uh?
No. No.
I was gonna say.
With the.
It's worth a try.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make the motion that we approve the requested road closure.
Second.
Have a motion, have a support, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
What's the date, Ted? And for that?
On September twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fourth.
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 Twenty-fourth, September twenty-fourth.
You're gonna be packed.
Then we'll close October the eighth. It'll be the last day.
Oh, no.
Two weeks after.
It'll be missed.
One more year?
No.
Nope, that's it. We're done. Tired and worn out. Alrighty, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay, consider approval of a resolution proclaiming May Community Mental Health Month.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll support.
Motion support, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any discussion about downtown?
Yeah, I had a couple things. I got a phone call from a business owner in the downtown area over the weekend, and they were outside sweeping the sidewalk and ran into a, and this is just for information. It's just, I'm just passing it along. And they ran into a couple that were thinking about renting the space, actually, that he was talking about. It's the space that used to be the Grand Trunk Place. And they were looking at putting maybe five or six thousand dollars in, in improvements in the inside. The only problem was, as they stood out on the sidewalk, is they sort of looked down and saw the art craft building with blue tarps on it, and looked across the street with, you know, you, I mean, I'm just letting you know that maybe somebody could get with the art craft, maybe, and just ask that maybe the blue tarps be converted to maybe just black blinds or something in there. I think that if, if somebody is looking at renting a space, they're probably walking outside their new business store and taking a look down the street, and they're seeing things that may not be very pleasant, and if they're gonna be spending money putting it into a business, you know, maybe the new DDA director could get with landlords and, you know, say, hey, you know, if you're gonna have a vacant building, you've got to do something because we don't want to lose potential renters, you know, for other spaces. So I wanted to bring that. The other one is, they, I, I had mentioned earlier in, in the fall that I had been in contact with a business that was interested or expressing an interest in coming to the downtown. And the store has said no. And, and I, and it's very interesting because I'm, you're kind of learning about what works in a downtown area versus what works in a mall, what works in a shopping area. And it, it's a kitchen store. It was actually a kitchen store. And actually, it was gonna be an upscale kitchen store, which would have provided really nice linens from Europe, would have provided some nice dinnerware, hand-painted Tuscan kind of stuff, a wide variety of olive oils, spices. And I think they were looking at having a kitchen room where they could actually give kitchen lessons, cooking lessons. The problem for them was, and I guess it never occurred to me, is that their first quarter profits were gonna be a little tough. I don't know if they had somebody here looking at the traffic on the sidewalk, but they felt that there wasn't sufficient traffic on the sidewalk, sidewalk traffic in the months of January, February, March to carry them through first quarter that they would normally get maybe if they were in an enclosed environment. So, and not that, I, I just found it very interesting that that was something that they looked at. I don't know if they had people here watching. I don't know if they went to Google Earth and looked at satellite pictures down here and counted the people that were on the sidewalk. I don't know how they came up with that thing. But what made this kind of an interesting potential store is that you probably have a large interest in kitchen, kitchen stores do very well if they're designed well, is that you had a kitchen across the street which does kitchen remodeling. So you had the opportunity for cross-marketing on this particular project. Now, does that mean that a kitchen store can't work? No, it just means that this particular company just, is, it's just not for them at this time, but that doesn't mean that somebody who's an entrepreneur couldn't come in here and just probably do a good job. I think they felt that the market was good for it, that there was probably a, a market their concern was getting through that first quarter. So I thought I would just bring that to the attention for whatever it's worth.
I do have something to add. So when we met, the days are escaping. It was last month about the vision, vision session. What was the date? I don't recall. But that was relatively in, just a few weeks ago or a month ago. We had some great ideas, and I think one of the priorities that came out was the downtown, which we need to continue focusing on. And I think having, this is a standing agenda item. We need to keep this on here. It just keeps the focus, even if we don't have anything to say during the meeting. But it's good that we're talking about it. But one of the things we talked about at the vision session was the downtown, specifically some timetables. For, for example, there's some, we're talking about norms. We were talking about other various things we want to try to establish. But general, I guess, specific question for you, Lynn, is what is your timetable for, for presenting the plan, meeting with the department heads, and when are we gonna see the next step? I just want to stay on top of this to make sure we're moving forward.
The department heads are all meeting on Friday to go over the strategic plan. Hope to present it back to the council. First meeting in May. We've had problems getting everybody all together on a Friday, which is the only minute Mike is in the office. So that's been part of the delay. So we're meeting this Friday. I do have Carmen coming in for that as well because of the planning work that he does is going to be very strategic in involving him in the downtown discussion.
Okay.
So hopefully, we will be bringing back the finalized plan for the council at the next meeting on, on May ninth.
May ninth, thank you. Then my next question is maybe outside of the downtown, per se, but across from Ed's place with the, I see they're starting to clear it, it seems like. When are we putting in the, the grass seed?
In the next week.
Okay. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
I am, too. We had to build up ground because it was sloping towards high-end engineering. So if you've noticed, we've brought in a lot of hand turf in there.
Okay.
But actually, we've been waiting till the warmer weather hit because we could not get a high-quality topsoil that we felt comfortable with seeding. And we think by early next week, that will be available, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm really looking forward to seeing that cover and eventually a new business. And speaking of, of that plan, I assume that the plan is to wait until we have the new economic development coordinator onboard to try to really have a solid plan for that spot, correct?
Yes, and I hope to make that offer tomorrow. I just finished doing the reference checks today.
Okay, you read my line. I was about to ask you where you're at with that, so, okay, excellent. And if all goes well, they, I assume they'll be starting in the middle of May or sometime.
It depends on how long the background and fingerprint checks take, but yes, that is the goal, to have them starting by mid-May.
All right, excellent. Yeah, that was all I had for the downtown. Thank you. And it'd be nice if, hopefully, they can get in for the, one, our first council meeting when they start, and really looking forward to meeting that person, so, thank you.
How's the clock? Just asking because a bunch of people nailed me on it today.
It's in the repair shop. The guts haven't been taken out of that thing in about twelve years. Two sides failed. We could have taken the two sides out, but how long was the other one? So we took the whole thing out. A week ago, though, we contacted Shinova, the clock company, watch company out of Detroit, and I sent them an email, called, and son of a gun, we got a return phone call. And as much as they liked the idea that we were reaching out to them, they told us so far, the only two clocks they have done in a municipal area is the city of Detroit. And there's talk about expanding that. I was hoping they could use us as a guinea pig, and we could get something totally cool to replace that. It may happen, but it's not happening right now. So with that said, repair is underway on the clock, and it's about fifteen hundred dollars, but it's gonna look very nice when it's done, and we should have it back within one to two weeks.
I might suggest contacting St. Clair, the city of St. Clair. They have a, a very similar clock in a park that's along the Detroit River right there.
Okay.
I mean, maybe they could kind of point you in a direction if, if this clock gets to be too problematic to keep alive. It's, it's beautiful. I've actually got some pictures of it if you want to see.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think I touched on it a little bit, and I just wanted to say, that vision session, to me, was really good for all of us, and for all of us to remember how well that day went and keep the ideas flowing because, and I know we are, and because I think that's what's gonna make a difference. And to me, that was a really nice, something new, I think, that we needed to do, and it's gonna really benefit the city, and hopefully in the future, we'll continue to do these and work together. I'm not trying to do a PR on it. I said, I thought it was a really good meeting. I thought it was something that we all kind of acknowledged, kind of going in and then breaking up and coming out, going back together and coming out. We realized how much we all had in common in ideas-wise, you know? And so I'd like to see those come attrition a little bit, and we work a little bit more towards making some of these ideas happen, because if we don't, they're just ideas, you know, so that's all I have on it.
John, if I could add to that, you know, once you ha- you pass the, once we pass the final plan, you know, we can even incorporate it, incorporate it into our downtown discussion. So we can, we can make sure we're staying on top of it. And again, I'm not trying to make more work for the sake of having a longer meeting, but we can have bullet points or say, hey, we're gonna go through. This is just my opinion, and obviously, I'm not speaking for council. Okay, this topic, skip, update, no. Just really simple, just to make sure we're staying on top of this important issue.
Okay. Managers report?
Hey, just some reminder ideas. For those of you that RSVP'd through me, and for those of you that you didn't, the Chamber Awards are this Wednesday at Fox Hill Country Club. Don't forget about that. It is going to be a wonderful event. Bob reminded me to let the public know and the council that our spring cleanup is going to be May fourteenth, and he is meeting this week to start planning for that. I want to thank Ken Mahalik for getting me the final pictures this weekend for the website. So we are moving forward with that, and we are on track to get that done. It is gonna be a great thing. We got great pictures. He did a wonderful job. I'm actually having a hard time narrowing it down because I got far more pictures than, than the five or six that I needed. He did a great job. So I want to thank you very much for that. And that's all I have to.
Counselor, Glenn?
Facebook has proven to be quite an interesting resource. There was a discussion on there, and this was in regard to art, of a gentleman named Mark Kopeh had commented on the idea that the, the rail trail that runs abutting the, the Tube Mill, the fence was really unsightly, and he thought that it might end up being a really good opportunity for the mural package that we keep kind of talking about, to, to turn that fencing into a location for some painting. I had talked to some friends at the Tube Mill, and Lynn had actually talked to Ted and Les to get permission for the, the opportunity to put some kind of a substrate over the fence that they, that could be painted on. And Mr. Kopeh came up with the idea, the concept of painting rail cars on there that could be the host for murals. And I thought, what a brilliant tie-in with the abandoned railroad right away that's the rail trail now. So we're sort of in the throes of trying to, to coordinate all the players that might end up being involved. Unfortunately, the last email that I had received from him, he was hoping that a meeting could be set up and tying in with the, the Tube Mill. And I, I have a feeling this is going to be a situation where we're going to have to come up with some kind of donations to be able to get supplies that, that would allow this to take place. I don't know that the Tube Mill is going to have an interest in trying to fund this project, but nonetheless, I think it's a brilliant idea. It's a, it makes perfect sense. It certainly would be an adornment to the, the trail there and a clever application of bringing some art into the, the community. They had two other locations that they had pitched, the, the back of Hornet concrete where the chalkboards are right now. They, they thought. They thought that that could be adorned. They liked the idea of the chalkboards, but the wall itself maybe being adorned a little bit. And a discussion, I'd suggest that they talk to Parks and Rec, but the wall at the parking lot of McCady Park was also a location that they thought that might end up lending itself to murals. But I just thought, in light of the conversations that we'd been having, that that was really a nice, timely idea, and it sounds as though there's a substantial group of people that are kind of pooling together to see if something can come from that. So, I think it's pretty exciting, so, that's all I had.
I don't have anything, but thank you, have a good night.
Yes, so I wanted to start by saying, we had our budget workshop on Saturday, and I had intentions to attend the Pine Size Marathon, but we were obviously in the budget workshop. I got out in time where I was able to walk down to McCady Park, and it was crowded with people. I spoke to the owners of Witch's Hat, Ryan and Aaron, and they said they actually had to turn away people because they had so many. So, a great problem to have, and I really see this as a positive for South Lyon. And Bob wanted to thank you. I received a call from some of the board members from the Pine Size, from Footprints Fitness, which was partnering with Witch's Hat, and there were some small minor tree cutbacks that needed to be cleaned up, and you guys were all on top of it. So, again, DPW working hard to get everything ready for an important event for our city, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Also, wanted to talk about, I was talking about events, and I saw with Lake Street Cruisin' here today, it kind of reminded me of all these events going on. And I think really that's the key block, is continuing to support these events such as Lake Street, Cruisin', Pine Size Marathon, and do whatever we can as a city to promote these. I mean, I've said all along, I want to see more events than what we're having now, and giving our support and promoting them, I think will just encourage more. And for example, actually just yesterday, there was a wrestling tournament in South Lyon High School, youth wrestling tournament, and there was kids from all over the state, even Ohio, and when people come in, as we know, they shop at our local establishments, our restaurants, and it's good for the community. So, along those lines, it kind of ties into the Volunteer Park and that developed and getting more tournaments there. Eventually, that's something I think is going to be really positive for the city. Now, with all the negative, I'm sorry, positive, wanted to just talk about maybe something a little bit negative or more concern of mine, and that's the sign by the car wash. We touched upon it on Saturday, but Lynn, I wanted to get an update because I saw that it's still on. And my understanding is that the size of the lettering, the electronic lettering, is beyond what's granted. So could you maybe speak to that for a moment?
It was off yesterday when I went by, and it was off this morning when Tom Lyon went by. We were in the process of issuing a letter revoking their building permit, which will permanently turn it off until such time as the sign is brought into compliance with both size, location, brightness, even if that means relocating the sign, changing the sign entirely. Dennis Smith, the building official, is writing the letter on City Letterhead, and it will be delivered to them tomorrow.
Okay, because I'm almost conflicted because of one part of me does not want to be harsh on our businesses. I want to 100% support them. But on the other hand, there's a safety aspect here. And I've received a lot of outreach from people in the community who have asked me, what's going on with this? People are walking by and with, when the cars are coming out, pulling out, the clearance isn't there because the sign's blocking, and it's a really big hazard, and mothers with their children are concerned. And it's, again, I don't want to be in committee in certain businesses, but at the same time, there's a process in place where you're supposed to get permission, or supposedly they had permission, but if they're in violation, they need to go to the zoning board of appeals, which I sit on. And for everyone's information, we meet the third Thursday of the month, so it's already too late, and my understanding is you need 30 days' notice, so the soonest they'd be able to come in is June. So really, according to how I understand the laws, is they shouldn't even be on until they have permission from the zoning board of appeals, which would be June. So, I'm just summarizing for everybody so they understand the situation, but it definitely is a concern, not only the decibels or whatever the term is for how bright it is, I think is a little bit of a nuisance, but it is. I'm sorry?
Candle power.
Yeah, there you go, candle, thanks, Glenn. But the safety aspect is a lot. I mean, I can't imagine somebody pulling out and hitting somebody. I just, it makes me very nervous. So, thank you for staying on it.
We're in the process, and as I said, the final inspection of the sign has not been issued, so we are revoking their building permit officially tomorrow. So it will be turned off.
Yeah, it was back on.
It's on tonight.
And it's just, I mean, I don't know.
It's green.
Yeah, no, feel free.
When I told Joe when we came in, I said, I noticed it was a big difference, it had green lettering on it tonight.
And I don't mind opening, I know this council comments is supposed to be for council, I don't mind opening this up if you have comments. I mean, it's something I think other people feel strongly, feel free to jump in.
It is something that we're addressing. We sent our ordinance officer out there today. They turned it off. Apparently, they are thinking that as soon as business hours are over, they can thwart city officials, because we're not in the office. That is not the case.
Mr. Mayor?
I just think it's a, you know, I'll say what I said the last time. You know, I mean, we went down there the one night, and it's very, very dark. I think it's a safety, I think it's a bigger issue with the cars. You know, I mean, it's a very unique location because of how dark it is in that one spot. The light projects a lot more light than I think people realize in that environment. And I'd like to see somehow, all of us work together and somehow rectify this problem before something happens, because I pulled, like I said, I pulled out to turn, and I was looking at the sign, missed the driveway, and almost got hit. And it was because I was looking at that sign blasting me in the windshield, and I'm, you know, consider myself to be a pretty good driver, and it was like it caught me off guard. So I don't want to see a bad situation happen there, and I keep thinking, as long as it goes on, it probably will, with beer involved and cars pulling in and out of there. So it's something we really need to take seriously, you know? It feels, it sounds like we're picking on somebody maybe a little bit. Well, Joe's right, there is some rules and some tweaking of that that needs to be adjusted, and I think he needs to understand that as well, that's all.
I think there's a constructive solution that's there. I guess my biggest bone of contention is him getting word that it needs to be turned off until everything is satisfied, and him turning it back on. I'm hoping that we have some kind of progressive penalty or something to cite him with when that kind of activity takes place. I would really like to discourage that kind of behavior.
So, yeah, we had gotten some information that the sign had been turned off. We'll be ramping up to take whatever legal action we need to take, whether it's through injunctive through the circuit court or through district court. We'll get ramped up, ready to take care of this. We wanted to, today, get out some administrative action indicating that the sign, that the permit has been revoked, and he can't light up the sign, the electronic changeable message portion of it, until that is in full compliance and he's got a final approval from the building official. So if that continues, that he's going to continue to operate that sign and the electronic message portion, we'll issue tickets and potentially seek injunctive relief or a TRO.
So, and Tim, to my point, though, is it correct in stating that even if things, we work with them, that the soonest he could even have considered would be ZBA in June, the third week in June, correct?
Well, for the variance that would allow him to, that would approve a variance for the size of the electronic message portion that he has, yes. So if he's going to try and operate the message portion of it prior to obtaining that variance, we'll be looking, working with the administration to deal with whether it's a civil infraction ticket or other injunctive relief, and make sure that we're getting what we need from him, and if he's not following the rules, we'll let the court know.
Now, if he were to change the sign to the proper size, then he's in compliance, and the candle power, you know, so the variance wouldn't be necessary.
Does that include using the sign as advertising for other businesses? We talked about that on Saturday.
The ordinance prohibits off-site advertising.
That's what you said.
So he will not be able to use the message sign changeable portion to advertise other businesses other than his own.
So what, what's the penalty on that?
Off the top of my head, a civil infraction, it's going to be a fine of several, but we could also, if it continues, we could seek injunctive relief either through, the equitable relief through district court or file a cert court action seeking a permanent injunction, prohibiting him from engaging in that type of violation.
Thanks.
Now, just so, I also want to comment, that may take a little bit of time to get before a judge, depending on the type of relief we're looking for and which form we go through.
If he continues to be in violation, though, a judge is going to really be angry by the time it gets to him, so...
Well, and I think we would always want to try and have the city be reasonable. We want to talk, we want to give them a notice that administratively, that you don't have the permission to do this, and present a case where the city has been reasonable and tried to work with the owner to achieve compliance, so. And then if it's not, if we're not getting compliance, you escalate enforcement, get the court involved.
Take the safety issue out of it, too. It's kind of putting a hindrance on the business owner next door as well. I mean, it's, I don't know what that law says based on that, but it really does create a problem within their establishment and out on that patio when that thing was in full boom, you know?
And when you're referring to the safety issue, are you referring to the brightness of the changeable portion or the location of the entire sign?
Well, that is too, and the cars pull out, like they said, it's kind of down at ground level, so when the cars pull out, if you happen to be coming down the sidewalk there, it is a little bit, it kind of blocks the vision a little bit. And I've been hearing that from people, too. I haven't experienced that part yet, but I can see how that would because of where it sits and when the cars come out of the drive-through there or going in. The other safety part of it is, I think it's because of the candle power is so strong, or it was, you know, especially when the flag was on there. It was just blasting you, you know, so bright, that because it's so dark there, you take in combination with the headlights coming at you, and then that light doing its thing, and you're trying to figure out where you're supposed to turn at and whatever, and you almost can't see anything. Things aren't very light and very bright. And I think if you add the perspective that it is an establishment that serves alcohol, beer, somewhere down the line, there is going to be an accident, because I almost turned right in front of somebody and it wasn't, had nothing to drink. So...
As a point of information to Harvey's comment, though, people need to realize that the old sign that had taken, you know, where you had to go up and change the letters, the activity that was conducted on that would still be allowed on this electronic sign. It's just he can't advertise for businesses that don't habitate that location, that's all. But, you know, a happy birthday Cindy or whatever is going to be completely all right.
Thanks, Tim.
I can't imagine there being anything left to say, thank you.
Unfortunately, I have something to say. First thing, the Volunteer Park Committee, they're still meeting. I believe they're meeting this Wednesday night, so hopefully, we'll get some more progress on what's going on with the groups and what the plans are for Volunteer Park. And the second thing I want to mention, I want to thank everyone for participating in the longevity walk, since it was sponsored by my neighbor, Dave Elkins, and his wife, Julie. Dave is a lung cancer survivor. It's a beautiful day. Thank you, Chief. Police officer was out there, did a great job stopping traffic, and we made some money. So we appreciate everyone that participated in the work. Thank you.
I have a couple of things. I would like to thank the Four Seasons Garden Club. This year, in their 2016 membership directory, they are featuring the Culture Arts Commission's big event that we had last summer in Paul Baker Park, Violence and Seascape. And I think this is just a great way of partnering with other organizations in the city to help promote the city. And I'd like to thank the Garden Club for promoting the Culture Arts Commission and their membership, and I think that's pretty good. Additionally, I had an opportunity to attend a lecture by Randy Grayken, who is a beekeeper. And why is this important tonight? Because Randy must have said five times in his lecture that his favorite venue is the South Lyon Farmer's Market. He said it is, out of all the farmer markets that he attends, the South Lyon Farmer's Market is the best venue for him. It's the nicest people. It's just a great, great environment. Additionally, I'm a huge tea drinker, so I like a lot of honey in my tea, and I found out that he actually has beehives in the South Lyon area. So for everybody who thought that South Lyon was a sweet spot in Oakland County, we now have the honey to prove it, and it's actually called South Lyon Honey. He sells out unbelievably on this. So when the farmer's market opens up on May 2nd, I'm going to stand in line and get some South Lyon honey or get on the list for it. Last, I just wanted to remind everybody that in the continuing series of poetry, the Culture Arts Commission is having another poetry reading. This is going to be on Wednesday. It's going to be at Third Monk at 228 Lafayette. This is Poetry Month. They are featuring Dennis Henriksen, who is coming from Lansing, and it starts at 7:00, and this is just a great event. If you haven't been to one of these poetry readings, these individuals who come and read the poetry come also. It's a performance. So get there early, it's going to be packed. Chief, you didn't hear that. It's going to be a packed environment. We're going to all have a good time, so I would just hope that everybody shows up and supports the Culture Arts Commission on this one. Thank you very much.
I have nothing else. So with that, we'll adjourn.
You can make the motion.
Just did.
Or?
Hi.